All right, so we do have, as you can tell, I got Mohammed online from, I believe you said Tanzania, right? All right, and so we will move through our agenda and Mohammed, I'll have you kind of over on the side here. So if you have anything, hopefully I'll get your attention. So I would, all right, and we'll check periodically to make sure you can still hear us. So Tori, if you would do the mindfulness for us, I would appreciate it.
Yes, yes, I would too. All right, so welcome. We're gonna go from our heads, get into our bodies and get ready to govern for this fabulous community of ours. So take a deep breath in, feel your lungs fill all the way up, and then exhale really slowly and intentionally, all the way out. Breathe in, and as you breathe in, straighten up your spine, feel your lungs expand, breathe out, all the way down. Take a deep breath in, and breathe out, landing out of your head into your body, out of where we've come from, right into this moment. And find a regular breathing pattern, your inhales and exhales, and just see if you can keep your mind focused on the sensation of breathing for a few minutes, finding some space. Check back in with your breathing. And on your next exhale, you can return to the room with clarity and openness and ready for our meeting.
Thank you very much. Mohammed, were you able to hear any of that?
Yes.
Okay, great. Uh, no. Can you send to Jen Mohammed's personal email? I'm not sure it'll come up, S-H-A. So at this point, any agenda review items or adjustments? Anybody wants to look at, make talk through? All right, so then moving right along, our focus on learning tonight, preschool. Sean, you wanna kick off?
Yes, I'm very happy to introduce our Director of Support Services in Early Learning, a new title for Director Robin Hood. And tonight she's gonna talk to us about early learning and specifically Act 166, where we have been early adopters in getting more of our young children into preschool. And she's gonna share with you some of the exciting changes that have happened in the last year and some of the challenges that we faced with Act 166 being a new legislation, and show you some of the great things that are happening in our programs.
Yay!
I'm told that I might be heard better if I'm over here, so. All right. So tonight you're gonna hear a lot of great things going on about Wenuski's three- and four-year-olds.
Yay!
And we have a lot of them, you're going to find out, that are in high-quality preschools and it's gonna really make a difference for all the kids. So what's new? I think the last time I sat with you all, it might have been a year ago or maybe even more than that. Some of the things since I've been here before is that shift in leadership that Sean talks about. And part of the work that I'm doing with early learning is also trying to bring the good work that we're doing in Wenuski to the forefront. So I'm on the Building Right Futures Council. I just got placed on the Building Right Futures Steering Committee and really trying to work closely with early adopters of Act 166. And I think that Wenuski's been a real resource to people that never did Act 62 that are moving forward. So we were in a really good place for that. One of the things that's really important to us is to focus on quality and not quantity. And so that means grow at a rate where we can still keep up and do things really well. And you'll see, we have a lot of things going on and I think we're doing them really well. But we also want to keep our eye on that and be sure that we don't just keep expanding just to do that. And right now, we don't really have a big, big waiting list. We had an opening, we filled it at the Family Center in here. We don't have the waiting list that I think I described to you a couple of years ago where how discouraging it was, year after year after year, you'd have a waiting list that you would put kids on of 30 kids, knowing that really there wasn't anything for them. I think the other thing that's new is the change in the kindergarten date, which I think the ripple effect is those kids will have something to go to and that's our quality, high-quality preschool.
Did you say the change in the kindergarten date?
We used to have the start date of kids having to turn five by 12:31. And this is our first year where it's September 1st. And I think that's going to really make a difference for kids that are coming into kindergarten, that have had preschool, they're coming in, they're a little bit older. I think we'll see that they will be a little more grounded coming in as a five-year-old and not as a four-year-old.
That's fabulous. It'd be awesome to look at the data too, you know, as the years go where, you know, their readiness is showing.
I think it's gonna make a difference. Some other things that we did this year is Sean and Head Start supported inviting our Head Start teachers in early to become a part of pre-service with us, that we had not done in the past because they really, their work year hasn't started yet. So they came in and they learned all about our policies, our goals, our graduate expectations. They looked at data with us, they worked with teachers during pre-service, so that's really, really positive.
Can you say a moment that preschool teachers are looking at graduation expectations?
Yes.
That is fabulous.
We also are doing some collaborative professional development and monthly trainings with Head Start. So one half-day a month, we do close early and not have an afternoon program. And we all come together, we have a whole year planned out. And I think that was one of the things as we were expanding that I said to Head Start and to Sean that if we really want to have high-quality programs for kids, there has to be time for learning together, for working together, and just, you know, that supervision and checking in and getting the pulse of what's going on in programs. So that is something we're really excited about. And again, just a public shout-out for our Vermont Community Preschool Collaborative Grant. The BCPC grant has helped us to do things in the new preschool program, the Early Learning Center, that have helped kids to get access to high-quality education. Last year, we used the part of the money to help fund one of the teachers over there, one of the Head Start teachers. This year, we're using the money towards our contract for transportation because we do bus all preschool kids here that want to be bused so that there is access. Because we know that if we don't provide transportation, it's really hard for some of them to get here.
And it seems those funds are so meaningful when they're put in early education.
And I think some of you may have been here last year when we had our BCPC tour and we had a lot of people come in and see what we were doing with that grant.
Hey, Robin, can I just stop for one second? I wanted to ask Frank, are you good with the video and the audio or would you like just to move around? Okay, great, thank you.
So we're an early adopter and what does that mean? Well, it means we had to transition from what we were doing with Act 62 to Act 166. Had to kind of get up to snuff on the new rules and procedures and protocols for that. But Act 166 really describes high-quality preschool as that 10 hours a week for 35 weeks in a high-quality program, and it can be public or it can be private. And one of the real changes is that they have, it's a statewide rate of $3,000 per student. And it used to be that each district or supervisory union could set the rate. So depending, if you were a provider, depending upon who you were partnering with, you might get $1,500, you might get $2,000, you might get $2,200. So what it really does is it provides those partner programs something that is dependable and they know that, okay, this is gonna be equal and I can accept kids from anywhere because Wenuski's gonna pay $3,000 or South Burlington, and I think that really makes a difference as well. And for parents to get that $3,000 off, whether you're from Wenuski, whether you're from South Burlington, wherever you are, I think that's a real positive.
Is that for the 35 weeks, Robin?
Yeah, yeah. And you have to be three by the same date as your kindergarten date, so by September 1st. So we already are starting a little wait list for kids that aren't three yet, but we're starting to find those kids too that we know will be three by then. We're looking for them already and we're already building a list of kids. With all the goodness of Act 166, there's some challenges. And this year, one of the challenges was background checks because the interpretation of educational background checks is now under Act 166 that these partner programs, who previously have gotten a different level of background checks, need the educational background checks. So we, in this region, got together and talked about what can we do to support that? And we decided that each supervisory union or district would be responsible for overseeing the background checks of whatever partner programs are in that district, whether we have kids that go to them or not. So we're helping out Wenuski Family Center and the Y right over here, the UBM Medical Center Y. So that's been some extra work for our central office. It's about an hour to process each background check. But we know that it has to happen and we're gonna pitch in and do that work. And another thing that we're really trying to do is working with the regional directors of Act 166 is really trying to align things such as payments. If you're a private provider and you're getting your payments, you know, four times a year from one school district but only three from the other, and this district's paying in this month and that month, we're trying to align that more and more so that providers know when they will get the money. They can depend on it and their programs can remain high-quality and not suffer because they're not getting the money when they need it. And another challenge, I think, is transportation. Even though we're a small city, some of our preschool kids were on the bus over an hour at the beginning of the year while bus drivers were getting down the route and all of that. And even though we're a small city, there's a lot of traffic. So it's amazing how long it can take to get here. And we still have some parents that are frustrated that, you know, it's still taking about an hour sometimes for a bus to get here. That's a long time for little kids to be on a bus. And opening the afternoon program did shorten the day by half an hour each of the sessions. So instead of that wonderful four-hour session that we had, eight to 12, we now have two three-and-a-half hour sessions. But we continue to work on those challenges and really try to stay focused on the positives and know that, you know, it's the communication, it's the thinking outside of the box, and we still think we can solve some of those down the road. And I believe we will. So I think what you're gonna wanna know is how many kids? And down at the bottom, you see that in bold, we have 119 three- and four-year-olds that are in some kind of high-quality preschool program right now. On-site between our Wenuski Early Childhood Program over here at JFK and our new Early Learning Center, you can see we have 60 kids that are coming to school every day. Down at the Family Center, we have 24. And another great change is the Wenuski Family Center used to serve kids three days a week and we asked them, please, 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 can you do four so kids can really get more time with you? And they have agreed to that and so kids are doing that. And there's our big number of partner programs, 35. That's a lot of partners and I'm gonna show you the list. I won't read it off, but I'm sure you're gonna see, you know, just names of places where you probably know people that have kids. Just lots of great, high-quality programs. Trinity Children's Center, you know, from up there down to the Burlington's Children's Space, out to Pine Forest, out to Williston. And you can see there are lots of choices for parents. And, you know, if they want their child at the Lake Champlain-Waldorf School, they can put their $3,000 toward that, or Hartworth's or Williston Enrichment Center. And then another list of schools, you can see the Montessori School, Little Ones University, and then down at the bottom, the three programs we have here in Wenuski. So that is another challenge. With having all those programs, you also want to have some kind of connection and relationship with those people. And you can imagine, we have to collect things like assessments, our teaching strategies, goal assessments, attendance, you know, just billing, sending the money out to the monthly, three times a year, excuse me. All of that takes time and takes time from the office. But again, when you see the kids in the programs, it's like just amazing. So the cost really up here is $3,000 per child. The transportation for the students on campus, right now, as I said, we're using some BCPC money, but eventually that will be part of our regular budget. We do have a .5 Act 166 coordinator and she was doing, that's Maybelene Lopez. She does an awesome job. She also was doing the previous programming. She also, her other half is our Triple E's Special Education District Evaluators, so it really fits nicely. Because a real positive outcome of having kids in school is that we have more eyes on kids and so you're recognizing if kids have some developmental concerns early on. And again, we have our Teaching Strategies Goal Assessment. And then we have, this year, another new thing is we did place a program assistant in the new program just to help out with the number of kids. We built a new office for the Head Start teachers so they have an office space they can share and have their things here. So some really good things that... This is one of our biggest achievements. We're really excited. In order to be eligible for Act 166, you need to be either a four- or five-star program. When I came on as director, we were a four-star program. We set a goal to become a five-star program. Last year, we brought in professional developers to help us in the areas that we were scoring low. We worked really, really hard to increase our conversations and the way that we were speaking to kids and expanding language. And we brought in an evaluator to look at that and now we are a five-star program.
Congratulations.
And that was a lot of work from a lot of people and it really is a special achievement to us. And this is just a description of stars. As I said, for Act 166, you have to be a four- or five-star program. So it's not just that we're compliant with state regs and we do the qualifications for training, but it's really the support we give families, it's a lot of self-reflection, it's a lot of regular assessment, and really operating under all the policies and procedures that you have to do. And someone from the state can come and evaluate you anytime and there are lots of things to remember when you have a license like this. And this is just what the stars mean and I'll just point you to that five-star outstanding in all five areas. But we felt really good when we had the four stars because that still was a really solid, solid program. And just, I think we're doing a great job there. So again, as I was talking about, the challenge is maintaining that and continuing that work so that you don't lose sight of all the important things you need to do to maintain a high-quality program. So our kids, I think you'll see in some of the pictures that we're going to show, just have lots of opportunities to do things that are really helping their little brains develop. And that's a lot of talking, a lot of really good opportunities to expand their language. It's all play-based, so lots of playing. But you will see, if you come into the room, every two weeks, everything is changed out and it's not the same thing day after day. The teachers are very, very strategic around their curriculum. Lots of singing, lots of reading, reading aloud, lots of eating healthy. Both programs have family-style either breakfast or lunch, depending upon if you're in the AM or PM. And then we also have healthy snacks, morning and afternoon. And it's a family-style meal where everyone is sitting together, including the adults. And the kinds of conversations that take place are really, really important for kids. And kids learn a lot through those. How to sit at the table, how to take turns, how to wait, how to be part of a conversation. And those are really important. And you'll see that our kids are inside and outside. They are, they're out on the playground, even on cold and windy days, you'll see them holding on to their little rings and walking around the school and going different places and it's really very sweet to see. And just, you know, doing all kinds of things, working with apples, making smoothies, painting, just a number of things. Dressing up, playing in our kitchen where we have made a real effort to put foods in there that are nutritious, play foods, and getting kids to really think about food in a really healthy way. And again, a lot of play, a lot of learning through play. So they may be learning words and how to write letters from the moment they walk in and they're signing in, whether they're drawing a picture of themselves or putting the first letter of their name, but to the things that they're doing when they're at that little table you see. And sometimes they play with wiggly worms and sometimes it's just, it's amazing the things that the teachers come up with. These are the elements of play-based education. And I'm really excited because I believe the kindergarten teachers, are they there now, Sean? Or are they going?
Not yet, no.
Our kindergarten teachers are going to some training on play-based education.
Yay!
So the preschool teachers are really excited about that and the kindergarten teachers are really excited about that. And so a goal is that when they come back, they're gonna get together so they can talk even more.
And the kindergarten students will be really excited about that.
But you can see that through that play-based education, the things that kids need to really develop are these skills, the social and emotional, the language development, just, you know, they're developing math skills, they're developing science skills and reading and doing a lot with the arts and social studies. And we have just as many little English language learners in preschool as we do throughout the school. So certainly the English language development as well. And again, that kindergarten readiness is what's happening through all of this. We, one of the things by having the teachers come early for pre-service is they were able to look at the kindergarten readiness survey data with the kindergarten teachers. And it was not a lot of time that they were together. It was a very beginning of, hmm, what's up with that? What does this tell us and what are some things that, you know, what might this mean and what can we do? So we're in those early stages of getting those two groups of people together. We know we need to do more of that, but we have made the beginning of it. And one of the things that we're looking forward to doing is more of that transition work while the kids are here. So it doesn't mean they need to know which kindergarten class they're going to, but maybe they get invited over for story time or snacks so that when they go to kindergarten in the summer, maybe for that week, they already know, oh, I know what snack time looks like in kindergarten, or I know what circle time looks like. So we're hoping to do more of those things and having them join in a little bit by the end of the year. And these are just some really important characteristics that we believe really affect how well a child will do in school. And if you look at the words in bold, you know from your own children, I know from mine, how important self-control is, having kids develop confidence and curiosity, intentionality, being able to pursue a goal and stick with it, that sense of belonging that's so important for kids, that communication and learning to cooperate. And I just think about, wow, if our kids could have experiences with those things and go into kindergarten and feel confident about themselves as learners, then we've really done a great job.
We talked about those things in our college assessment. Truly, like it's...
Absolutely.
I was thinking about some remedial training myself.
Well, I just know that intentionality, that goal, whether it's, you know, the goal of learning to zip your coat and dress yourself before you go out to recess or stick with a really hard class that you feel like giving up but you know you're gonna keep trying.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a lifelong habit and it's really directly related to that growth mindset that we want kids to develop. One of the things that I am really proud of this year is that one half-day a month, we have been really intentional about what we do with that and we have planned out a year-long work plan. And this is just an example for you to see the kind of work that I'm doing with Head Start and special educators and support staff at that level. And, you know, it's from the beginning of the year, just talking about needs of kids and how to adapt curriculum to what's the evaluation process for someone that's that young? And what are Head Start roles and responsibilities? What are Wenuski teacher roles and responsibilities? October, we had a great presentation that we're gonna continue because they want more of interventions for children with autism spectrum disorder. We have a high number of that in both of our preschools. So we had a specialist come in who has been working with our school and just really has done some great work there. We're gonna be working on reviewing parent's survey results. That's really important to us to know, what do parents think? What are we, where are we really hitting the mark and where are we doing well? And where can they see us improve? And then you can see into December, we're gonna be doing some more with speech and language. And then in January, really getting more and more into that kindergarten transition, that kindergarten readiness. February, we're hoping to have Karen Proziet from Wenuski Family Center. They have, they're doing a pilot on early MTSS and we're hoping that she will be able to confirm that date.
MTSS?
Multiple tiers of instructional support. So really looking at different interventions for students to see if a student is struggling in one area, what kinds of interventions can we provide to see if that student will respond and that will make the difference in helping that student succeed. And then, of course, in May, you can see, not only will we reflect, but we will celebrate all the good that we've done this year.
So important.
And then just in last, a quick overview of our two onsite programs. The model that we've had at JFK is the Wenuski Early Childhood Program and that is a, that's a program that has an AM and PM program. It's co-taught by a Head Start teacher and a special educator. And so that model looks a little different than the Early Learning Center model, which is two Head Start teachers. Now, if we have students with disabilities in the other program, it's just that that kind of support, someone will go in and do developmental therapy. We'll push in the support, but they're not there all day. So it's a little different. And the Early Childhood Program, we have something on Friday mornings. That's really a four-day program for most kids. And Friday morning is callback for our intensive meetings, children. And we do more targeted work with a smaller group of kids. And it's just another chance for kids to learn and generalize some more behaviors or activities that they're doing. or activities that they're doing. The exciting, some exciting news is you're going to see a commercial, probably in about a month, that's being shot tomorrow afternoon in our preschool. I don't know if I, I don't think I told Sean and I don't know if you knew it. I just found out about it myself within the past few days. But the afternoon teacher, Carrie, has been selected by Head Start to be, the classroom's going to be videoed for a public service announcement for Head Start. So Winuski's going to be on TV and you're going to see a really nice public service announcement that should be coming out pretty soon. Another really exciting thing that's going on is two of the teachers from our new Early Learning Center that have joined us this year, Liz and Michelle, they have been selected to participate in a pilot group where they are doing, that they are being coached as, they're in this expert group of expert teachers and they are being coached and they are being observed and they go and model to other people. So that's a real special thing. And Carrie, the afternoon teacher in, over at JFK is also, she's also been selected and she's working with a peer group around teaching and looking at practices. So they're really excited and I think those kinds of opportunities are really good for our kids because they are going to try out some of these new things with our kids. This is just a...
What's, what's CDHS?
Champlain Valley Head Start.
Oh, okay.
I should have put the words there, I will. This is just a snapshot. I don't know if you can see her, but in the front of the room by the smart board is Lisa Dole. She's our Intensive Needs Special Educator. And we have a whole group of teachers there and support staff and she was teaching them all around discrete trials and different things that we do with kids in the, in the classroom. And one of the things that we do is, you saw just the monthly trainings, but this classroom does weekly training. So we have trainings every single week where we are really focused and we're trying to really draw upon the experts that are here in our building, but also if we don't have what we need, we go beyond. But we have some people in our building, Lisa, Catherine, Levine, our speech pathologists, that are really just wonderful teachers of our staff. And so we've been using them as well as bringing in some people. And we do things from toilet training tips to, you know, how do you work with a child behaviorally? How do you, how do you get kids to pay attention to you and focus and all kinds of good things? Just some snapshots, you'll see lots of kids working together. And yet if a child wants to go off on their own and do something by themselves, that's an opportunity for them as well. And just a big, big thank you because without the support of the school board last year to redo that room, we would not be where we are and we would not have all of the kids that are being served, served. And, and a big shout out and thank you to the Winuski citizens that really support a budget that makes a difference for these kids. And, you know, look at that face. We have a hundred and some odd of the faces of kids that are really getting great opportunities. So I'm here now, if you have any other questions or things that you want me to think about, look into, feedback, happy to have any of that.
Just wanted to pass a real quick one along. Sean took me for a walk through the, the new room and they were having applesauce as a snack, but they had made it the day before. So they made it one day, they ate it the next. So shared a snack was, was really interesting to see the kids, you know, enjoying the applesauce a little bit more since they made it.
Yeah.
Did you know what was in it?
Yeah, helps.
I just want to say that, um, I've been in the school district since family center and preschool and I still have my, my little binder I made in preschool or like the teachers made for me. And just like seeing the change from my preschool days to like how it looks now, it's just really exciting and I'm really happy for the kids that are going through preschool because I miss preschool.
I think we all do.
And just seeing that makes me like, I want to go back.
After dates, you just want to go back and have your...
More play-based, right? So important.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's the one thing I'm really excited to see in school and going to play-based and even kindergarten starting to go into play-based because that's such a huge foundational building block for children moving on. And they create a lot of those foundations in those early years to help them add on to it as they learn academically. So that is a huge step in the right direction and an uncommon step in the right direction. I mean, it's getting there, but it's been a long time because I've been in the field for 20 years and it used to be like, what? You have a play-based curriculum? Shame on you. So it's so nice and refreshing to see.
And the, the new early learning standards that were just finally finalized, very aligned with all of that as well.
So you said 119 kids that you have identified in Winuski that are out there in programs. Are there kids that we know that aren't in programs?
There are some that we know of that are not in programs really through parent choice. There are some parents that just say, you know what, I'm doing okay with them at home and I get them in play groups and things such as that. But the, we are, I mean, like we have spent time knocking on doors, calling people, the, the wait list, if we ever get one, is just a couple of kids and it usually gets filled very quickly. And one of the, the things that we have been able to do, because Maybelline is so creative, is we do have a couple of peer slots in our Winuski Early Childhood Program. So if there's someone waiting for that five-day-a-week program, sometimes we can still put them in something for two or three days while they're waiting. You know, the, the other thing I was saying too is the challenge is that Head Start is income-based. So there are sometimes parents that would love to have their kids up here on campus that because it's income-based, we don't have a whole lot of over-income children here. We will take some now and then if, if it means a slot will go blank. But I think that would be a challenge for someone that, you know, isn't eligible for Head Start if they wanted their child to be here. But you can see they're, you know, they're finding other places too. There's a, you know, and all of those places that I listed, those are all now our pre-approved partners. There may not be a student at every single place. There, there is at almost every single place, but some people have gone through the whole process because it is quite a process. And I think that's why you see fewer home-based programs or smaller programs do it because it's, it's a large amount of time, it's an expense to have the teaching strategies goal, to go through the STARS application. It's, it's a lot and then you have to bring in, if, if you are not a certified teacher yourself, you have to bring in someone to do that. So, you know, we're willing to try to help people get started, but that sometimes deters the smaller programs.
It's a huge deterrent.
Yeah.
I think another kudos to, to the board and the community would be that we were able to, with your support, make the shift so that Robin could put the energy into this by having the director be on the curriculum. And there's no way we would be moving at this pace or even close to it if we didn't have that leadership. And then she was able to, you know, really help Maybelline and Maybelline is incredible and stepped up her leadership too. Fabulous.
And I would be lying if I said it hasn't taken a lot of our time. But it's been fun work. But we really, you know, that was our focus this fall. We wanted it to be done and done well and right, so.
And enough can't be said for intentional integrity around early childhood planning.
I would agree.
We are, it is the, the most important focus that we could possibly do for this community and all our kids. It is transformative.
Next to birth to three.
Yes.
Which is the next one.
Certainly, but yeah, zero, I think zero to five, I think in preschool.
It is zero to five though, actually. They switched it from birth to three to five.
I think in general though, from what I've seen over the four or five years I've done this, is you don't often see start from the budget to implementation to results in anywhere near this kind of time. The time between the time we put that room in and the time we've got people that are considered experts in that room helping others. It's just phenomenal to see that kind of a, that kind of result.
Robin, are you using the ASQ?
Um...
What's that?
It's the, um, it's a...
It's a screening...
Screening for...
For autism.
It's, or any developmental problems. And it's try, they're trying to make it a statewide program so that children, it's starting in daycare or, or anywhere and it's one screening tool that will carry itself right through doctor's offices, school districts.
Where we see it used more is at the doctor's office or at more for a zero to three-year-old.
Because there, there's a huge pilot program out right now. So I've been part of it. It's awesome.
But, you know, the other side of it is that, that because I'm also the director of support services, I've seen that most of the other directors of support services, we have been collaborating with Children's Integrated Services and early intervention. So we're really trying to align the work that we're doing with kids. And I just think it's, you know, there's so much more work to do. I mean, we have a vision of where we want to go, but, you know, that kind of stuff costs money too. And you want to be very strategic in making sure that you do it well and you do it right. So thank you so much.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have emailed this to Sean, so if anyone wants it, I'm sure he could send it to all of you.
Did you have any questions, Mohammed? It was kind of interesting to hear that one of the... One of the, one of the issues that was a positive was having the busing of the kindergarten, the pre-kindergarten kids. But then have it show up on the bottom line as a challenge as well.
Yeah, right.
So you never know.
Absolutely. Yeah, especially in light of our current discussion and everybody else's transportation. It's just harder than it looks.
Yeah, yeah, which is crazy.
So one last question, maybe this is for you, Sean, but so 119 this year, is that significantly more than last year or the, or the previous years that were in early childhood programs in Winuski?
Yes. I don't remember what the number was last year. I think it was in the eighties.
We were in, we might've hit 90, 92 or something, but...
We're talking half-day, 119. In half-day programs.
Yes.
Half-day, like half-day annual or just half-day?
Half-day.
Well, minimum, some of those kids in other programs may be full-day.
Some of those kids may be...
Yeah. Minimum 10 hours a week, 35 hours to qualify for the 3,000.
Great stuff. Thanks, Robin.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thanks, Rob.
Thank, thank the staff for all the hard work.
I will.
I know it hasn't been easy. So we appreciate it.
They're good people. Thanks a lot. Have a good night.
Good night.
Public comments. Set up a bunch of chairs, that was good. All right, consent agenda. We have our, the policy's been working on over the last couple of sessions here. Combination, combining the harassment, hazing and bullying into one and repealing the other three. So just as a pretty much significant note in that whole piece, I would accept a motion to accept a consent agenda.
Soon.
All right, any other discussion in there? One second. I'm, I'm with you.
Like...
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Consent agenda. Then six here, executive limitations, working with the review of the budget parameters. We have a, we didn't have a soft copy of this by chance, right? Okay. All right.
Thank you. See this in the report?
And so what I asked Sean to do here is, as we're going to start in on the budget, I believe December 2nd is our next session, again, a shout out to bring a budget buddy or two. And so what I tried to do is get at least a baseline of what we've got to work with for this year.
So this document probably looks familiar to, if you remember from the September meeting, we had a little bit of discussion just to understand what the allowable growth piece looks like for the upcoming two years in, in building budgets. And what I added to the document at the very bottom to kind of reiterate for the board and for the community is that while we are, we are in the middle of the range of allowable growth, 2.75 percent, and the range is from zero to 5.5, giving us a total of $325,000 that we could add year to year. In our current budget modeling, given some assumptions around staffing, around healthcare and so forth, we believe right now that we would be in the position of reducing up to at least $280,000 to maintain what we have in the budget. So it, it, it looks very challenging right now based on the assumptions that we have and the percentage that we have been given to work within.
Wait, let me ask you before I've heard this wrong. We would, we're, we're going to need to reduce $280,000 from the budget...
Right.
To make the allowable growth.
Correct. To hit that cap of $325,000 or 2.75 growth year to year, based on our current modeling, and this is not adding people, program, anything, we will have to take 280 at least out of the budget.
You know, spend a total of 600,000 more and you know, 325.
So the whole piece of Act 46 there that's catching up to us is the fact that it is a percent increase on your current spending for equalized pupil. It's not a state average or a, a limit. It is on your current spending.
So there again, while we kept our belts tight, we are now somewhat being punished for it.
Yeah, but we have a better percentage rate than most.
However...
It doesn't negate.
Right. And if you go, if you, if you go...
Freeze inequity.
Well, I, I would say if, if you were to look at...
That's right.
Winuski School District spending over time, you know, we discussed this the last couple of years, that we're in the bottom quartile.
Yeah.
Very fiscally responsible. So, but, but districts and supervisory unions who had been spending at a higher rate and had higher per-pupil spending, some of them are in a similar percentage growth that we are.
Yeah, why is that?
So they're, because it's based on last year's. So if you had spent, 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 but then last year you were lower...
You paused and were lower on the spending.
Yeah, right.
So for the record, we are freezing inequality.
We have brought that very directly.
Okay. And so this, continue to get clear about education being equal. It's not. Okay.
Well, yeah, that's crazy though. I didn't, I guess I didn't realize.
Yeah, so I wanted this to be a perspective to set where we're going.
Yeah.
As to try to level set what we've got coming in front of us.
The other thing that I would, I would add is that there's a great deal of advocacy happening around the state where, from at the superintendent level in terms of resolutions from the, from the BSA, at the Vermont School Board Association level, there's also a resolution. There's a, a lot of advocacy happening with individuals and small groups with the House and the Senate Education Committees at this point. As we're, as we're getting to the point where our, our budget modeling is getting more clear and we're realizing the impact, we're able to share that in a more specific way with our legislators and let them know what the true impacts of, of these spending caps are.
So Sean and I have met with Clem and Deanna, along with the city folks, to go through what are the list of items that are on our, on our minds that should be on theirs and their agendas. And this obviously was one of those topics to, to bring forward. Unfortunately, from a timing perspective, we're going to be in a situation where we have to do the negotiations, we have to do the budget and the outcome of this, if it's going to change at all, it's going to be very, very late in the process if we're going to be able to do anything with any changes at all. So, you know, we'll be voting on a budget in the first Tuesday of March. This likely won't have much resolution before April or May. So we have what we have unless they're going to do something quicker.
And the timing, they would have to, they would have to come back into session early in, in order to make... And the timing, they would have to, they would have to come back into session early in, in order to make any changes and. And those changes would need to be, you know, communicated at the very latest in, in the December timeframe for us to be. Nimble enough to do anything in early January when budgets need to be uh, completed in order to meet the, the, the warning timelines.
Does that, is it two percent cut? On our fifteen million dollar budget or so?
Yeah, we're at about fourteen.
Fourteen, so with a three percent, two and a half?
To the two eighty.
To the two eighty, yeah.
Yeah. And that has again, some assumptions in it on what we would have expected to go forward with under normal circumstances. So, there are some uh, other assumptions in there of, you know, what would we have done and where does this put us with where we're gonna be? So, there, there, it's not dead flat to this year.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
So. That's not to reduce, or not, not to negate the challenge we've got in front of us, by any means.
All that money we have for capital projects is uh, in a lot box.
Right.
Well, you know, you get into, you know, the, the, the general, the, the capital reserve piece and you gotta be really careful about that because again.
We need that money too.
You do it, well, no, you do it the first time and once you put something into place, you've gotta support it.
Yeah.
And so you've, at some point in time, when the drug wears off, you gotta kick in and you gotta support it. Alright, so, that's a very reluctantly done at that point. It, it may be an easy Band-Aid, but it is a dangerous.
But, right, but, but you're talking about the excess from each year, like we can't pull from what's already in there.
Right. Right, right.
But if we had an excess this year, which we usually do, right, fifty, sixty, a hundred.
Yep.
You're saying.
But even that, even that ends up being a drug that if it goes away, you gotta put it back in the following year because you've got a program that is now using it.
You're saying that's, that's the drug. Right, although, in, in this case, considering that there may be changes coming to this rule over the course of the coming year. It could be a short-term solution that would make sense given possible changes to this rule.
Well, the bottom, the bottom piece of this then is, um, and I'm not sure, I think you're saying that if we use it, then, you know, it may, some things may change.
Yeah.
And allow it to, to be overcome later.
Exactly, it'll, it'll ease our dependence off.
Yeah, the, the double taxation piece of going over the two point seven five is gonna be a tough piece as well.
Right, no, we don't wanna do that, right, right.
So, that, that's, goes kind of fits with that, so.
Well, and in, in talking to my colleagues, you know, there's a, a lot of people in similar situations and I think if you go back to the times of the challenges for change a few years ago. Um, and, and just the difficulties in, in budgets, um. You're not, there's nowhere to cut books and supplies and equipment and stuff like that anymore. It's just, you know, it, it's program, it's uh, and as program, it's, it's people.
Staff.
Yeah, and as we know, for us, in our unique uh, uh, population. Uh, we're a pretty labor-intensive organization and we need to be.
Yeah.
And that's how we, we can serve our, our students well. And so, uh, I, I think that is at the heart of what our challenge is gonna be, is how do we serve our kids well in the way that we have been and continue our trajectory. When we're looking at halving the cut program and or people.
Yeah, and at the same time, I look at this and if your colleagues are telling you the same all over the state, then it's achieving exactly what they said I have to do. Which is to reduce the increased expenditure every year, whatever the consequence.
Right.
And that's, it's, it's, it's working.
So, even, even if it unintentionally is perpetuating inequality.
Oh, sure, yeah, no, if the goal is, is, you know.
In schools, it's, yeah.
That's the bottom line discussion.
Yeah, turn, turn the curve, the expense curve down and this is, and this is the pain that, you know, everyone was eventually expecting and here we are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Fighting against it and uh, I'm curious to see, you know, how much noise we can make and what sort of resistance there is to that noise.
Well, I, I think, you know, the, the, one of the main goals, if you go and look at the goals of Act forty-six, is the expansion of learning opportunities.
Yeah, yeah. Right, right.
And as you look around the state, that is in fact, going to happen in, in some cases and in many places it's gonna happen. It's, it's a different discussion than we're having here, so.
Yeah.
Alright.
That's true.
So, and we'll have, uh, a- as part of our annual agenda, we will have Clem and Deanna here, um, at some point, I forget if it's in January. It's in January to hit them just before they go in, but that's ninety-two percent of the way through our budget cycle at that point, so.
We'll stay, we'll stay in touch with them.
Yeah.
Now, too, yeah.
Yeah.
Did you say the SBA is uh, crafting language that, that would propose easing the restriction or what are they?
Yes, I, I, I don't have the resolution in front of me, but yes, that's it. Either removing it, delaying it, or modifying it, I think, to that effect.
Alright, any other thoughts? Come into a, come into a computer terminal near you soon. And again, I, I think that's, uh, I believe our first meeting is December second based on the calendar we set up and again, I'd ask if you can. Bring someone along with you to help us work through that, that would help on the other end as well. Alright, uh, then, uh, monitoring report? Uh, this one here is.
Tongue twister.
No, no, hold on, I think I've jumped one uh, frame ahead of me here. Nope, yeah, superintendent's secession. So, in the, in the list of our two policies being reviewed, or four policies being reviewed every year, this one is the second time around. For the secession in case something should happen, which we certainly hope nothing does.
So, the, in, in review of this uh, uh, monitoring report. Uh, it, it appeared to me to be in order and not need significant changes. The only changes that I made were updating it to reflect our new elementary principal, Sarah Robb. In those different roles. Down in the, the last, uh, number five and, and five through eight.
And this then is a, is a discussion, so I don't know if anybody has any, any comments, we will accept this through consent as we've. Process we've adopted, we'll accept it in the consent in December, but are there any uh, questions, clarifications?
Do the whole leadership team come to a school board meeting?
In the case of uh, something happening to, to Sean, I think the answer is we would have to have at least one of those until we. Figured out where we were going. It probably would be the first one, to make sure we had everything covered, which.
Sarah Mia?
At, at least, yeah. And probably Robin and Rebecca because they have between, you know, it, it's spread pretty well amongst the, the whole crew.
Yeah, to, to me, that would be covered in number six, uh, executive branch leadership team, so they would.
Mm-hmm.
The two of them would decide whether it be one or both of them and then it, depending on what's on the agenda. Would bring one or more of the others if there's, you know, fiscal, legal, so forth.
And at that point, we'd have to be talking about an agenda that gets the bare minimums covered to make sure we're covered and, you know, leave the work to be done. But, I, you know, I, I think back four or five years again on this, thinking that we're now looking ahead at what would happen if, rather than, I don't know. What we were really looking at in terms of succession, but it was a cold start, I think. So, this, it's at least comforting to know that there's a plan in place to get into all the files.
Very clear plan in place, it's, it's nice.
So. That's uh, policy governance, Pat, I think again, just helping for the clarity, the clarity of focus and the vision.
This would help, uh, my daughter Eliza knew that Sean was gonna be out of town for two days at a conference, she's like, well, who's gonna run the school?
Away, really?
Yeah. And I said, well, he was already out of town, she's like, but I noticed he was gone, so who's running the school? I could give her this plan and let her understand.
That's right. Send her the link.
Send her the link. Here's the plan for who's gonna be running the school.
I think that's a tribute in another respect too, that the visibility is there as well.
Well, that's what it was, she said, you know, he always stands outside of lunch when I go into lunch and he wasn't there for two days and I noticed. So, I wanna know who's running the school.
You're setting an expectation.
She's, she's got me pegged.
She does, she's watching.
Who's talking around here?
Something to talk about, routine as well.
I'll make sure I send her this.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good. And, uh, you know, Sean and I have talked also about, and, and I think we had this discussion several months ago and that is about doing. More monitoring reports in a year, but until we get the N squared, we've decided to stick with the four. And the repeat over two years rather than doing all of them in one, so, while we get the N's and the metrics on the N squared up.
Yeah, and there's a few of them that I think that have, uh, they lend themselves to a much more automaticity than others. And this is one of them, I think, that's pretty easy, that can be run through and frequently.
Yep, alright, um, and on. Okay, so we'll move, we'll move on then to student report. Who's gonna start?
Okay, alright, happy Veterans Day, everybody.
Thank you.
And also happy Diwali, um, and happy no school.
Thanks for coming.
Yes.
Yes, that's right, thank you. So dedicated.
They just woke up.
Good morning, good morning, lovely, how was breakfast?
I'm seeing rainbow in the morning, definitely the evening, so.
I'm a bit hungry. Alright, so, we'll start off, um, with prom committee. Um, prom committee, our theme and location is still in the, in the low end, but um. Our recent fundraiser, our Yankee Candle fundraiser, we have raised over seven hundred dollars, um, from that fundraiser, uh, which is amazing. And uh, next fundraiser will be cute little snowflake grams throughout the high school in December. Um, it's just some fun stuff, we want to make the fundraiser, it's fun for the students, but something where we could also make a profit from. Um, the V S B A is next on our list as mentioned and Mr. McManon's board report. A group of high school students, I think was Holly Turner, Jared Fountain and Chanel Bailey. Uh, all went to the conference with two teachers, Tom Pear and Matt Webb, and spoke about their experiences with student voice leadership. And new things that Winuski is doing and really publicizing what we're doing and growing. Um, on the twenty-ninth, students from Ms. Parkett's accounting class traveled down to the kindergarten to help the kids carve pumpkins and then play some games with them.
Mm-hmm.
Um, on the week of Halloween, students from Ms. Parkett's information processing class also traveled. You repeated that, anyway, so, they also walked the kindergarteners down to the roundabout, which I find.
Was sweet, yeah, it was fun.
To see the pumpkins or?
Mm-hmm.
Also connected.
Bring their pumpkins. To bring their pumpkins down for the display.
Bring, yeah, bring the pumpkins down.
Um, also connected to information processing, um, there's a new typing game that's been introduced into the class and.
Are you playing it?
It's, I'm not taking the class this year, but it's spreading throughout the school and there are talks about a high school typing tournament using that game.
Is this Nitro?
Uh, Nitro type, yeah, and so, um, it's good to be, there are thoughts about it and there are a few people like me who are very pumped for it. Next, so we have four students from Winuski's band that participated in the Champlain Valley District Concert Band. Last weekend on the sixth and the seventh, uh, included, included me and Ladania, there are two flutists. One saxophone player and one percussionist that participated in this two-day event, it was about like ten hours of rehearsing and then we had an hour and a half concert.
Yeah.
We were given sheet music about a month before the concert and then we practiced the music together as a band all day on Friday and Saturday. And then we performed the pieces at our concert late Saturday. Um, also, on November sixth, the entire school watched a play, Snow White and the Ten Dwarfs, ten dwarfs. Yeah, the play was well received and all the students in the play put on a wonderful performance and I've heard some pretty cool stuff happening in the play, so. That's exciting. Also, the roll-in conference was on October twenty-ninth, a mix of middle, high school students and teachers represented from Winuski to go to the conference. The keynote speaker was Dr. Yang Zhao, who, um, as I heard from one of the people who went, had a presentation that featured Kim Kardashian on the screen for at least seven minutes. I don't know, I don't know the context, but, um, interesting and, um. I was also mentioned in Rebecca Holcomb's speeches for these past two conferences, which I find pretty awesome. Um, concern, uh, concerning equity in test scores and that stuff.
Did, did you say that you were quoted by her?
I was quoted.
Oh, okay, I just, I didn't hear that clearly.
Oh, okay.
I wanna make sure everybody heard that.
What did she quote you as saying?
Um, so she was talking, she's, I think she's debriefing about a lot of the things going on in Vermont education systems right now and. Because of the new change in test scores, she started mentioning equity and then like how. There are some negative impacts because of test-taking, because of the culture that you, the United States has developed and. Um, she just quoted me on something I said at our last state board meeting about how test scores are often demoralizing. And could actually make students feel less motivated to do, um, to perform at their best and actually try. Um, so, I was mentioned, it was pretty cool, um.
Well done.
That's the perspective they're looking for, so.
Yeah. Winuski, um, so, and not only that, a few days ago, actually on Monday, we had two students. Um, Keenan and I went to Dartmouth College for a really cool day trip. Uh, it was with the Upper Bound Program, which is a college prep program. And so for those of you who don't know what Upper Bound is, Upper Bound is basically a, like I said earlier, a college pro- program. In which it invites high school students from Winuski and Burlington for the UVM campus to really teach them about. Learning about college and really pursuing their passions and not giving up on college because it's, say they are low income or their parents never gone to college. And it just really gives students a chance to really pursue college and learn more about that. And so, there are a lot of cool college trips that occur in the year and I thought that I would mention it since I don't think I've mentioned Upper Bound before. Um, not only that, there was the Vermont Creative Summit Conference, which was last Wednesday, I believe. And two students, uh, Chanel Bailey and I, we participated in the Vermont Creative Summit. Hosted by the Vermont Arts Council and Montpelier at the Vermont College of Fine Arts. And, uh, I was a moderator of a panel talking about Act seventy-seven, which is the personalized learning plans. Um, and it featured students from South Burlington's Big Picture Program, Montpelier's SOAR Program, our I-Lab. And also Cabot School's new educational and personalized learning plan system. And it was really cool, there were a lot of personal stories shared and how, and like the impact of personalized learning plans, so Vermont's doing very well.
And you moderated the conversation?
Yeah.
That's a pretty cool role.
Yeah, that's cool, it was fun, it was really fun, I enjoyed that.
Well done.
Yeah.
You were literally everywhere.
Literally, you were everywhere, no wonder you're so tired, just woke up.
Ladania, we both know what happens in the afternoon now. Sometime afternoon.
Uh, continuing on, uh, the first middle and high school orchestra chorus and, uh, band concert is on the nineteenth at seven in the P A C. Uh, the P T O craft fair is on the twenty-first, the trend shows on December fifth. Uh, Winuski's second annual STEM night was held on the twenty-ninth. Things were a little rocky, but overall went very well. The event was very exciting with many people attending. Uh, students were very engaged and enjoyed themselves in their workshops and were appreciative of the community's involvement. Ms. Vermont and other STEM, uh, college representatives showed up to help out. And Ms. Vermont enjoyed it so much that she's coming back for free to work with the middle school, s- schoolers in their science classes. Just super cool.
Wonderful.
Yeah, and, and then the I-Lab Share a Name was held on Monday, the ninth, and then, um, so for some sports stuff. Uh, the girls' and boys' athletic banquet were held to wrap up the sports season. Awards were handed out, some of them, for example, being most exciting player to watch and fan favorite, that was given to Vishnu Karawa. And most improved given to Mariah Mativier and Lakar. And Vishnu and Nikki Deng were nominated for an all-star soccer team and they were chosen by their coach. And Riley Corrigan got an honor roll mentioned for the team. And then, yeah, football banquet is being held on the fifteenth. And speaking of football, Brandon Bigelow and Abdul Arbo were nominated to play in the North South Football Game. And so, seniors from all football teams in Vermont were chosen by their coach to be nominated and selected for an all-star team. Students from the north of Vermont make up a team and play against students from the south. This game is this Saturday in Middlebury. And then basketball season is starting, uh, some dates. First varsity boys' game is on December fifth at Stowe. The first JV and varsity girls' game is on December ninth against Virgin's. The first middle school girls' game is on December tenth at St. Albans Town. And the first middle school boys' game is on December eleventh at Grand Island, and then over to the elementary. Uh, middle school and high school students have been heading over to the elementary to be reading buddies. And even some older elementary students are helping the younger students. And even some older elementary students are helping the younger students read. Uh Dave Pilkey, the author of the Captain Underpants series, one of my favorite series as a kid. Uh donated one thousand dollars to the library.
To this library?
Yes, that's awesome.
That is fabulous.
Through the Flying Pig Bookstore in Shover.
I know.
Uh continuing, Jarrett Crosska. I think I said that right, uh children's book author came in and talked to the second grade, was it?
Lunch Lady Series, another great one.
Uh I'm sure I'll look it up later. Uh there's been a lot of young adults in the elementary lately, the Lumberjacks hockey team has come back once again to work with the third grade. The Saint Mike's freshmen are working with first grade E L L students and U V M juniors are scattered throughout all the classrooms. Uh the money from the book fair was turned into scholastic dollars and was given to every class. So now every class has ninety dollars to spend on books. Uh the December concert is coming up soon and break is coming up soon. Yes, Thanksgiving break.
It's the whole week, right?
And parent teacher conferences before that.
Parent teacher conferences on that Monday, yeah.
Alright. Great, so a rowdy STEM conference, huh?
That's a lot of folks. Oh, yeah, it was so well attended.
That's amazing.
Yeah, siblings, the whole, every, a lot of people were here.
That's great.
Yeah, it was all in the library, it was really well set up, kids ran the stations. Fabulous, three D printer back there, oh my gosh, it was wonderful.
And B S A C provided the dinner.
Really? That's great.
Yeah.
There's a lot of fun stuff there.
There really was. It's good to know what we have to prepare for, since it's, I mean, it's it's pretty amazing that a sc- science and technology night. Is pulling out this many folks, it's really, and kids were excited to be running their stations, they were really psyched to tell you about their stuff. That was really cool, so now we know what to expect. Exuberance, yes, for science, math and technology. Rattiness around mathematics, I mean, you can't ask for more.
Alright, thanks again. Um we had on here the report on the the V S B A annual meeting. Sean and I were able to to attend and I think in his board report and Rainbow mentioned it as well, we had. Uh good representation on uh day one in the morning for. Our our kids, it was very heartening to see for, what's this, this third year? In a row, we've had since the the partnership presentation three years ago. Last year we had representation, this year there was a good. Uh representation into what it is we're doing here in the I-Lab, the math lab. Um Chanel Bailey seems to be showing up almost in as many places as you are and Rainbow lately, so. But can she type? No, she dances.
You dance with your fingers, she dances.
I I can't dance for life.
Otherwise, they had, uh you know, several sessions, uh as they always do, four or five sessions to choose from. We did the, I forget which the first one we did was.
Policy governance and it would talk about Act Seventy Seven.
How do you talk to people about what it is that's going on, the changes that are coming into schools? It's gonna be one of our key pieces that we have to to do over the next year is. Stay out ahead of the communication curve on what the changes are because I know it's a radical change for some, I'm sure. My other uh my other session was uh board chair one-on-one stuff, just to try to figure out how. How to do this job, so. Long as you, yeah, it was kinda, it was kinda tied all together, well, we tied it to it and. Um one big discussion was superintendent evaluations. Which we did tonight, we'll do in a couple of months, we did the annual evaluation last month. But it's kind of an ongoing piece with policy governance and when you look around the state, a lot of folks either don't have something formal set up. Or if they do, it's been a very conscious effort to try to put something in place, so. It's it's a unique, I think it's more of a unique situation to have a good plan than not, so. It's uh happy with that. At least those discussions.
And I think you guys should be really proud of being one of the uh the frontrunner boards around the state and policy governance because. It is really starting to take off. V S B A and others who support that development at the board level are having a hard time keeping up with it. And there's a lot of requests and and boards are really interested in it and I think because they're hearing good stuff, you know, from others, including yourselves, so.
Well, it just makes sense, I mean, it's a really wonderful way to run an organization, especially education, yeah.
It it certainly seems to be hitting right where it needs to hit. Um and so on that point, then, um I mentioned that the staff, the the. Uh first day the staff was in, I came in and gave him a little blip, like I always do and. One of the things is about a bike ride I took this summer and I got home, I I went with Chris Magistrally and we went and we got home. And when I got home, he sent me a picture of me from behind while he was riding. And then he sent me three more pictures of scenery along the ride. And he, I thought he was trying to catch up to me, but he was putting his camera away. Moral of the story is, no matter how good you think you're doing, there's always more you can do. So with that in mind, I got a uh item here to to reach out to Val to see if we could get to the policy governance two-on-one. What's the, what's the next step? How do we keep, how do we keep uh moving in a positive fashion and not get complacent? So I think we talked about that being a potentially a four hour session, I think maybe a Saturday morning, is that? What we had come to?
I can't think of anything better to do on a Saturday morning.
Sean bring the coffee, oh wait, no, this is our thing, I'll bring it. So I'll reach out to her, see if I can get some dates, we'll get a. We'll get a timeout to see what we can do and Mohammed, you said you're back in uh you're back in town sometime middle of December, so we'll try to plan it for just after that. Um so anything else, I think the rest of the annual meeting was, we had some legislators there while we um. Tor and Axe Forty-Six in pretty good shape with them there, so it worked out pretty well, it was a pretty broad slapping. From around, pretty much from around the state. So the last item, um the last item on here, I didn't wanna minimize and I wanted to make sure we saved a little bit of time for. Um we took this up last uh month for the first time, uh it was Julian, Jen and I here. And we wanted to wait for um Tori and Mohammed to get back to have the deeper discussion. And that is on our and and back to the policy governance piece and not getting complacent, how do we look at what it is we do? And make sure that we are being true to what it is we should be doing. That is the same policy interpretations that Sean's been doing on his. How do we wanna do it on ours? I did one sometime back and then we brought this one. Uh four dot one, Jen just sent it out, uh the link uh to everybody.
But so it's not like a completed one, it's ideas of how to format so that going forward, you have for a format to use. Because the the only thing Mike said that they that they provide with is like this outline box thing. Which Sean does not use and Sean's makes more sense of doing our interpretation and how because. So Mike and I went back and forth and everything over, so I'm like, well, I think it needs to be more of a board effort because we're all gonna be doing it.
Right, didn't we even schedule ourselves for who was gonna take passes at it?
You scheduled me first.
We did, yeah.
Right, cuz you weren't there.
My recommendation is to scratch all of the boxed area and start right from the. Right above the interpretation, I don't know page that is.
Yeah, just right where the interpretation.
Provision of its policy four point one and then our interpretation would be and then the data to support that. And then um we would be reporting in compliance, then scratch the rest of it. Because all of that is um thoughts that people had, but. But what it is is we already are doing all of that, so there's no need to put that in there, the only time you put that in there is if you're not in compliance. But because we're in compliance with it, we just have to show the data that shows that we are in compliance.
And so I think your recommendation was to do it as a group?
Right, so to go through it, look at it, but because you don't, we, one of the things about being in policy governance is you're. You're showing compliance and every, you're, if you're showing compliance in everything you're doing, right? And we're always moving forward to improve what we're doing and you're just trying not to break the law in any way or go outside of policy governance. So in my mind, looking through this, there's nothing we've done to be out of compliance with this policy. And there's no need to go through each subcategory for an interpretation when you want the broader picture and then the data, which is the subcategories to back up. Your interpretation. That being said, you guys get it from there because I think it's bigger than, I think it's simple and it's easy to simplify. With the interpretation and the data, but I think because there's too many different pieces. I think everyone needs to look at it.
Yep, so for for context, I think the piece we wanna keep in mind when we do these is not here and today. But it is two years from now, we've changed sixty percent of us over. Are we still being true to what the policy governance guidelines or rules are? But I wanna set something right now that says we're gonna check on ourselves and make sure that we are following what it is we said we're gonna do. And then as we go through the next years and we get elections and we have board changeovers, we continue that check. And and adjust if we have to, but we're consciously looking at what it is we're doing, so. I guess my question is, how do we wanna?
Where we disagree on it.
Right, and it's always healthy.
Because I get what he's saying, but if you look back at like our um retreat. Meeting and we set up a whole year plan of like meeting with Val for our two point O. Um ways of implementing and making sure our new board members are educated in policy governance. So we already have all those pieces in place, so that doesn't make us out of compliance with this, it makes us in compliance with it, so there's no reason to. Say that we're out of compliance and list those things as to be better at, because we're a board. And it's up to the board to do these things as a board. So that's the, like, those are the, those are the, those are, so that's why it's like it is, like, you have that one piece of the data showing that we're in compliance. And then you have the part underneath it where it says if you marked anything other than in compliance, explain, and then you have all that stuff explaining it. But to me.
Did you come up with this template or was this a template that was provided?
Yeah, I got this from.
So we've we've tried to tweak it and I tweaked it a little bit, Sean tweaked it a little bit, so.
I would probably spend more time looking at it.
And I recommend you do because it's, I had to print it out. I had to print it out and.
That's on the annual agenda. But I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm really having a hard time following. Yep, so, so the issue really is.
The format for it.
Okay, because it looks like, as I I look over, it looks like there are. There's the sections just like the monitoring reports that Sean does, where it says here's this, this section, which would be one. And then you would interpret that section. And then you go to two and then you do, you.
Nope, but that's different, that's completely different one, four point two, this would be. Four point one has all of its subcategories and that's where you have to be careful. So you wanna make sure you, all your subcategories are in four point one, otherwise you're gonna have four point one, one point one and then you're gonna have four point two point one.
Can you not interpret that as a whole, to explain that whole paragraph?
I actually went onto the policy governance page and looked up all of these things, I recommend you do it too. Because that's how I came up with the conclusion that you don't want to take out each subcategory under the. So policy four point one is itself, that's its whole entity.
The board, not the staff, will be responsible for excellence in governance, the board will, so that's all.
And then everything in those boxes support that if we're in compliance with four point one. Okay, four point two is something completely different.
The board will direct control and inspire the organization through the careful establishment of broad written policies reflecting the board's values and perspectives.
That's four point two?
That's four point two and then there's an A and there's.
Right, we'll do these independently, four four dot one was a specific piece.
So the question is about the format for how one, we're going to. Determine an interpretation of what it's asking us to do, I interpret this to mean that we are responsible for, and we paraphrase it, put it in our own words, right?
And get it out of the boxes.
And get it out of, okay, and then underneath it, we give the evidence for how we are in compliance and we report out whether we're compliant or not compliant.
And if not compliant, what are we gonna do to get back?
Right, so in doing it that way, I report we're in compliance with it.
And you're doing it as a whole.
If you're doing it as a whole.
As a whole, meaning section one as a whole and then section two as a whole.
I haven't done section two.
Okay, so then the the. The disagreement was then you want to take it.
Four dot one one, four dot one two.
Ah, I got you, okay.
Four dot one three. What's four dot one one?
Well, if you take out the board responsibility, it would be one and, oh gosh, you're a touch thing. And then the board, not the staff, will be responsible for excellence in governing, that would be one point two. And then the board will monitor uh the initiator of policy, not, that's three. So each sentence would be four point one point one, four point one point two, four point one point three.
Right, I was, I was thinking each section of four dot one having an interpretation.
And Sean, when you do yours, that is not how you do it, isn't it, don't you take the broad one and then list it?
No, but I do interpretation and evidence for the elements and then I do. And I do do compliance or not with each one of those because there are some, you you may have a component, like for example, in four point one governing style. You may say you're in compliance for uh number one, number three, through through the end, but number two, there's something there that you're not.
Number two, meaning like the board, not the staff, will be responsible for excellence in governing?
No, see, I'm reading it a little bit different, I see that more as like a policy statement at the beginning and that um. It's telling you, it says the emphasis on and it's giving guidance about why you're doing what you're doing. And then I see the one through, what's the last, six? Then I see, I see one through six as more um more of the actions of the board.
Like the self-monitor.
You would have an interpretation of one through six and evidence for each one of those. Yeah, and that you would have, you could be in compliance with uh. One or more of those and out of compliance with one or more of those. Which would make you out of compliance with the whole policy, even if one element was out of compliance and then you do the same thing I do, which is you'd make a plan and a timeline and you. You remedy it.
So can I clarify? So you're, you're, Sean, you're speaking to saying that first paragraph, that's not a one, it's the big broad thing, the board will govern lawfully absorbing the principles of policy governance model with an emphasis on. And then each A, A through G being the elements of that.
So accordingly, that that one through six is what gets you to. The encouragement of diversity, the strategic leadership.
Because outward vision rather than internal preoccupation is sort of explained in one, which is we will cultivate a sense of, uh cultivate a sense of group responsibility. Responsible excellence in governing, uh initiator of policy, so one is sort of the action behind A.
I don't know that they all definitely tie together, but all six together form. How you get to the overall statement. Is that the top piece is a higher level. A higher level piece of, yeah, you can't tie A to one, B to two.
Right, they don't directly.
All six together, if you're doing them all, you are supporting the overall statement. And so the question is interpretation and uh. Results on each of the six or on the four dot one as a whole?
Do we have to make any, are we just discussing this? So I I can spend a little time looking at this?
I I think we wanna find a path forward that sets us on a. Mission to be able to do this consistently, consistently well and be able to flush out if we have any issues. that we need to fix.
And I, I agree that the format to being able to report out on it does make sense, so I think coming to some sort of consensus around how that layout's gonna look is gonna help us, uh, be better at articulating where we are with certain elements and being clear about that. So that's a good thing to focus on, but I would certainly need some time to sit with this.
Right, and I think every person on the board needs to look and say, I say we're in compliance, and if someone thinks they're not, and another person doesn't, we need to have those discussions, because maybe somebody forgot our conversation of what our plans were and, you know, stuff like that. So I think that's really, I mean, one person cannot fill one of these out, obviously, because we all have different, different interpretations. We all come from different walks of life, and so.
And we are cultivating a sense of group responsibility.
Exactly.
Right.
Exactly.
Four point one point one.
Uh, but again, if, 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 if over time, there is one
In case you're curious.
I'll call it a one rogue element that's not necessarily following the plan, that's gotta somehow get flushed out and, and dealt with. The, the chair obviously needs to take a role, but
Absolutely.
Somehow this may be an, a method to use that as leverage as well, so.
And I think you've got a really good start here on the, on the data, all those bullets, 'cause you could take those and reorganize them under one through six where they fit. And then you just need to, the, probably get more specific in the interpretations for each of those six elements.
So do we wanna do it in a meeting here, or do we wanna do them and bring them in? It just seems like it's.
I think, so everyone has a copy of this. I think it's fine for us all to work on this as a working document, as far as I'm concerned. That's the beauty of the drive. So everyone can pick a different color, and Sean can be the overall helper of it all, the facilitator.
Cause he's got nothing else to do.
I know, Sean, I'm sorry.
No, I, I think it would be good to come in with different drafts, or either using this as a, sometimes I need a fresh.
But you know, it even says up here that we get good feedback from the superintendent, so.
Well, I would recommend to you, 'cause looking at the annual agenda plan, you also have one due next month, and then the following month, I think you're, and then there's a month or two off, and then.
Yeah, because this one's already been.
So if you really want, maybe take a, maybe we could rearrange the annual agenda plan to push some out, so that you could take more time on the first one and get it the way you want it?
Absolutely.
Yeah. That makes sense. And when you're saying that it's due, it's, it's, what's due is certain pieces to be interpreted and to be recorded out on.
Right, right. I wanted to, I wanted to be able to touch on, I mean, we've got sections, what, four and five to
But once we have the format down pat and the way we're all looking at it, the rest of them won't be that difficult to do.
Right, it'll, it'll flow, it'll flow easier.
Right, it's, it's all section four, and there's eight of them.
Okay.
So, a- all the way down, I mean, things like governance investment, probably pretty quick, um, but when you get down into some of them, making sure that the chairs roll a- as that changes over time, you wanna make sure the, you've, you're doing it well, you're doing it right. I don't know that I'm saying that that's being done, but as, as you roll through time and change that, whoever's sitting in that chair,
These chairs don't.
You wanna make sure they, they work, so.
We need to roll or something.
I'm good with taking the time. Um, do we each wanna do some, take that and manipulate the interpretation? Or do we wanna do it on the drive and come to one art form that we all agree on?
Well, I don't know how anyone else is feeling, but I, I definitely would like to sit with it and look at different drafts for my own, you know, like, sort of alone in my own thinking, and sort of see how I can make my own sense of it, and then hear other people's perspectives too, like, give us all a pass at even just structuring the, the data that's already here, just in compliance in terms of layout. Um, do you have a thought?
I'll bring it back to, for the same kind of discussion.
Yeah, 'cause to me, the format, like, knowing how I'm reporting out on something and what the language and sort of the layout is, is gonna be something I need to wrap my head around.
Right, and that was the intent of getting a starting point, first format, just something to get a, something to get a, a, uh, discussion started.
Yeah, which I love. Thank you for taking this on. This is great.
So when you do this, you make sure you're looking at the actual policy and not just the heading at the top.
Okay.
Cause that's really key in figuring it out.
Which one is the actual policy?
Is it on here?
It's on the website.
Yeah.
Four point one, there's the first paragraph, and then there's numbers one through six.
Right.
But this, then they're different from the ones in the starter?
They're not so much different as it's, it's, if you're not gonna use this kind of format, you really wanna look at what the policy says and to go into your interpretation and moving.
They are the same languages in those boxes, though.
Right, just cut them out and paste them in.
Right. It's, you know, it's the, it's showing the difference in how we look at things on a computer. This is too busy for me. The screen, you know what I mean? Like, a box is just too busy.
And over time.
For what we're doing, is what I'm saying.
Right, so we have four point zero to four point eight to.
Correct. Over time, we've got those eight.
Yeah, and right now, we're just focusing on four point one.
Yeah.
So we can do a little work on this to.
Yeah, we can certainly move the annual agenda around to keep, keep things.
We would have to, I would say anyways, just because we've already moved this twice.
And that's fine. I wanna get it right. I don't wanna, I don't wanna rush it through. I wanna make sure it's something that we do, so. All right.
Thanks for starting it.
We'll put a.
Let's put a continued.
Hey, I said if you started, I'd be done already.
Who?
You.
Me?
Yeah.
No way. Well, we'll see what we get next. I'm glad you started it. Thank you.
All right, so, uh, template?
No, no clarifying question.
Are we hoping, do, do you all want input on the way in which we're gonna discuss this, or do you want input on our reactions to how we evaluate each of these points? Like, are we talking process or content?
So the first thing we need to do is the process. How are we going to report that we're in compliance or out of compliance?
Process and format, like, how are we gonna lay it out?
Right, so like, you know, Sean gives us his monitoring reports. Do we want that kind of format? Or do we want to stick with the boxes and then do the interpretation underneath, which is double the work.
You like, you like a more narrative format? You like a quick reference with the boxes?
They, they, yeah, they both get to the same point, but for different people, so.
Okay.
All right, and, and then at some point, we'll do the actual substantive conversation about where.
Well, and, well, while you're do it, while you're figuring out the format, you can easily put in the context.
Yeah, because she's got the subs, she's got the, the, the points, the evidence down here, the way down here. Here's all the data.
Those are the ones that you put in?
Some of them, may put in some. Some of them were, Sean may have put in some. All three of us have been working on it.
So there's data, so now it's just a matter, nice job.
So it's, it's a starting point.
Yeah, that's where we need to go.
Okay, great.
So next, between now and December, whatever it is.
Ninth.
Ninth. Um, if we can get an updated, if you can all put some, some piece into the, the drive. I think that's where you are now, right? That's what you sent out, is the link to the drive. Um, we could do, take a stab at it.
Have it all done by then.
We'll get it fine-tuned and put comments, narrative, um, thoughts, put them in italics or parentheses or whatever, however you wanna separate thoughts from content. And we'll take a stab at it. We'll try to get down through the eight. Again, I wanna set something in place that over time, it's a habit to look at what it is we do and how we do it, so. I'd rather take the time to do it right than to do it fast and make it be a stamp-the-box routine. I don't want, I don't want that to be the case. All right, good.
Great, thank you.
So we will come back to that one. I appreciate the discussion. Um, recent community activities. Anything, anybody got anything to report out? It's been a quick October. I don't know for anybody else, but.
STEM, that was fun.
No, what's that, did STEM?
STEM, huh?
I did a walkthrough.
You did, yeah.
Janitorial.
Yeah, Mike was there?
Did a walkthrough.
He did.
Oh, that's right, that was the night we had our.
We had a meeting.
Other meeting, yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah.
The Halloween, uh, community party.
I heard that was really fun.
That was great.
It was really great. It was a lot of fun.
Saw some videos online about kids dancing, having a great time.
It was really, really good. It was really good, and, and a, and a subsequent meeting, what was that meeting called that, uh, you hosted, Sean?
Oh, Wunuski Health and Wellness and the Early Childhood Network and the Promise Communities.
Yep, that was, uh, an interesting meeting, trying to sort of align three related but distinct efforts at positive change in Wunuski. That was a really good one. Uh, and one of the things that we talked about at the table that I was sitting at was how it's great to have a committed group of townsfolk trying to make change for, um, you know, traditionally marginalized population, and it's great to have events that seek to bring in everyone, uh, you know, no matter what your level of need, like a community party, you know, down at the Halloween, like the STEM thing, I mean, just sort of great events that Wunuski can show up at and recognize itself. That was a great one.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else? Any, uh, items for the agenda next time? We'll start, uh, crossing over with budget.
Uh, Tori was asking me about our conversation about the data on discipline and so forth, and we said that we would pick that back up when we had more data. Is that what we agreed to last time? I was trying to remember, and that was gonna be in springtime?
Yes, yeah. I don't know that it's in the, we, we, it's a good reminder, 'cause I don't know that we put it explicitly in the agenda plan, but we will get it in there.
That'd be great.
All right, upcoming events, craft fair on the twenty-first, parent-teacher conferences on the twenty-third, Thanksgiving recess in the week of Thanksgiving, twenty-three to twenty-seven. Budget meetings, December two, nine, sixteen, twenty-three, and January sixth. So weekly through December.
The twenty-third? Oh, we already had that conversation. We're gonna be so.
We can, we, we'll have to see where we end up, where we work it out. Uh, we do have an endpoint on the other end as well. And then as the girls mentioned, the, the Dollars for Scholars, the next regular board meeting on the ninth. And at this point, I would accept a motion to move into executive session.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?